Of course, as soon as you take a bite, that's where.
Right. So, welcome to the Human Resources Work Session. Do we have any public comment? Nobody in the room.
No public.
Therefore, I suspect there's no committee response. And approval of minutes from ten eleven. I do have one, what I think is a correction. I'll find it. I have to read through all the politicos who are constantly emailing me about things. Sorry. So, I think that on item four point two, discussion on having LACS present, I think that should be ITA present on standard. Four point two. Four point two, so IT presentation then. Having should be ITA present on standard. And other than that, it's good finding.
Okay, so I move to accept.
Accepting. Okay, yes. All on paper? Okay. Alright, and so now we are moving on to exit interviews update.
Alright. Thank you, Tricia. Welcome, everybody. I have a new clicker tonight.
Oh.
And. Vote.
I know.
Dangerous.
This is so Tricia doesn't have to do all the clicking.
Yeah, next slide, Tricia, next slide.
I only have a hundred slides.
I will be over there cooking for you.
Well, welcome. We're gonna talk about exit interview process tonight. Yeah, look at that beautiful words. It works. First thing I'd like to do is we're gonna review some data tonight. Sort of like define the scope of the universe, define the scope of the numbers that we're gonna be dealing with. I think it could be kind of enlightening. And allows us to begin to offer a narrative. Not to counteract any other narratives that are out there, but this is the data that's been pulled from the board reports, the personnel portion of the board reports from July first, twenty nineteen to June thirty, twenty twenty two. Why did I choose that number? It's three full school years prior to the current school year. I could have added the school year, but then when I'm doing averages, I have to divide by four point something versus divided by three. And that was the deal for me. Alright. Teachers. We're gonna deal with teachers tonight. This is not to detract from an urban colleagues. I think we really do have to find a school system in the state and every single person is vital to that. If you like the presentation tonight, if you like the data and how it's presented, we will repeat this for the other, our other colleague groups. And talk about it in that way.
I think it is important to break it up by groups because there's different aspects of the job, so do love them into the same grouping.
Yeah.
It's not accurate information. There are specifics and then they'll get lost.
Yeah, Chris, I think you're right. How the board, how the district responds to the data might be different depending on what group we're working on.
Oh, yeah.
These numbers are, they're accurate, but they might not be fully complete yet because there are some people that could have resigned in board reports prior to July first, twenty nineteen that were still effective during this time period.
Okay.
And there could have been some that resigned after twenty twenty two that were retroactively effective. But we're gonna get the broad numbers and we'll continue to expand these numbers. What I'd really like to do is get the three years prior to COVID hitting, the three full school years prior to COVID hitting. We now have essentially three years where our lives will turn upside down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And see what the trends show. I don't know. I don't even wanna guess because I don't, I don't know, but it could be really illuminating. So, just, I know sitting in finance, if we sat in finance, that is, that has some heavy stuff. So, just a fun question, now there's no wrong answer. Other than retirements, what rate of turnover would you be looking at as a board? So, if you had a hundred employees in your organization and ten of them left every year, is that ten percent rate of turnover concerning? Is it something that's livable? Like what, in your minds, and again, no wrong answer, no trick question, what are you looking for?
Not that I pay attention to these things, but forty six percent per industry average is actually current average out the last six years.
Forty six percent. That must have come from.
Depending on, now there's certain industries outside of retirement.
Four, two.
Now, you look at certain industries with burnout with specificity or, you know, skill sets that are required, then people jump for different reasons, so.
On average, we have roughly six hundred and fifteen teachers that have been flows a little bit, but over the years, looking at the data, I chose that number. Some people can say it's a little higher, some a little lower, but I think for purposes. So, you know, ten percent of that is around sixty one teachers, sixty, sixty teachers a year outside of retired. That would cause me a little agitative, but I'm just sort of trying to get a fun sense of where you're, where you're at. Especially with two retired teachers. What would make you nervous? What would, what would you be like, oh, you know, two percent a year?
Yeah.
You're.
Outside of retirement, I would feel anything above five would make me nervous.
But there's some categories to that, so what would make you nervous would be leaving for negative reasons.
Well, of course.
Right.
For a better paying job, for atmosphere and work environment.
Well, yeah, I'd still wanna know why they left.
Yeah.
But if it were more than five, I'd be thinking, how, you know, I wanna keep the stable populations, the trained people.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
They get better till they start getting worse.
I'm glad you said that.
And we wanna keep them getting better as long as we can, so, yeah.
One thing, though, that's been pointed out, and I've, you know, seen it, that this district, we have something of a transient population.
Right.
That we have teachers who are here for a limited time because of.
Traveling spouses.
Yeah, something that a spouse is doing. Yeah, so. Or they, you know, they came here because, they came to the general area because they were, came here for school and then they got employed and then they go back home, you know, or go back to where they have family. I mean, I don't know whether that's a real factor or not, but
Yeah. Alright.
My sense is that that's a bit more than than your average school system.
That could prove to be, you know, one of those driving forces that we look at.
Okay. Yeah. Right.
Alright. So.
No.
Come on. Go ahead and click.
They just gave you that and said it would work. It really, it's Tricia, Tricia's really good at it.
Yeah, right. Tricia. Excellent.
Bob, turn it off and then turn it back on again.
Voice from above.
Where, where does that happen?
What just happened?
I, I thought that voice was only in my head. Should I wait thirty seconds after turning it off? Voice in my head. The suspense is building.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, I just was looking it up, though, but for twenty nineteen from the controller, teacher turnover in New York City was twenty one percent.
Wait, save that? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Twenty one percent. Twenty one percent for New York City. I'm trying to get the state.
Oh, shit. Right at the beginning of COVID. Right?
Well, that's.
There's the voice from.
That was pre-COVID, okay.
Oh, that's the voice from above.
So, this. Okay, okay.
Alright, sorry.
Alright.
Here we go.
That was my.
Alright. Here we go. Teacher resignations for three years prior to this year, a hundred and seventy two. On average, that's fifty seven a year. It's about nine point three percent of the teacher workforce.
That includes retirement.
That includes retirement. You will see, I'm gonna use my laser. You will see retirements right there, fifty five percent, a full, almost a third of the resignations were full of retirement. You'll see the percentages are there, thirty two, the raw number, fifty five retirements in the three years. And we're talking about a hundred and seventy two, so the percentage is thirty two percent. Our goal, obviously with retention, exit interviews being part of that process, is to reduce that average fifty seven down to something. Now, what that something is, is partly the question I asked at the beginning. What are we, how are we gonna expend our finite time, resources and staff and money potentially on reducing that number from fifty seven a year down to something we find appropriate? Alright, now, the next question would be, is the fifty seven the actual number that we should be expending resources on? And here we go, there we go. So, there are some resignations that are not under review. A DMR means diminishing marginal returns. We did spend a lot of time and resources and effort interviewing retirees to see why they're retiring, but mostly, just anecdotally, I think people know that like when it's time, it's time. I mean, do you get some retirees who say, no, I'm gonna stay another year or two? Sometimes that's good things, sometimes it turns out to be not submit. And we have a lot of retirees that return as subs, either extended day, long-term subs, or day-to-day, and those folks are fantastic. We also have, oops, hit the wrong button, sorry. Yep, there we go. We also caused a little bit of our own problem. Three, almost three percent of our resignations were for people who took other jobs with us.
So, really transfers.
Yeah.
Right.
Either promotions into administration
Okay.
or they changed tenure areas, but it did result in a resignation and it hit the board report. So, if folks just simply are talking about resignations, they potentially could be including retirements and our own internal transfers, which, you know, add to the narrative but might not add to the factual part. Now, I do wanna say this, as the teacher shortage continues nationwide and it doesn't look like it's gonna better, we might actually be forced to start talking about and spending resources, time, effort and money to extend the lifetime of retirees in the district. Like, how do we delay them retiring, even for a year or two? It could be, could make a huge difference as we struggle to find, especially hard to find teachers. But you see, you know, I made these colors dark now. You see the pie starting to narrow down. And you see that there's diminishing marginal returns one, so there's obviously gonna be diminishing marginal returns two, which is the next slide. And you'll see what I'm calling appropriate resignations. Appropriate is a nice way to say both they and us realize that we're not a good, we're not a good fit for them, we're not a good fit for us. It's only four percent, but, you know, as, as time goes on, we add things here. I also wanna say that that number is seven right there. That number's probably gonna double. This was a quick review of just the names as I read down a hundred and seventy two names. I'm like, ah, these seven people I remember, and it was, it was mutually beneficial for them not to be here. I estimate, you know, there were others where I'm like, how did that actually resolve itself? I'm gonna have to pull files and see. But my gut instinct reviewing that, that'll at least double to roughly around eight percent. And so, you'll see here, these seven people were pulled, one of them from the no reason column, that used to be thirteen. Five from personal, that used to be nineteen on the other slide. Relocation was nineteen, it's now one. As this goes up, these go down, this piece of the pie gets a little larger and we're left with folks and we should spend our time, resources combined. So, what is the universe here? We started with a hundred and seventy two. If we back out these folks, it's down to a hundred and five resignations over the three-year period. It's not fifty seven per year, it's thirty five per year that we should spend our time and effort and resources on. So, it's not nine point three percent, it's roughly five point seven percent. And that is point seven percent over both what Jill and I thought was the point where we're like, ah, this could be something we need to sink our teeth into. So, at five point seven percent, scope of the universe and at thirty five people a year, teachers per year, the scope of the universe, I don't feel is yeah, something that we can't really delve into. It's something that we possibly could really reduce significantly if we can identify and look quickly at these folks. Alright, this is, this is the only slide that I got. Oh, you know, I think, I'll go back one, I'm sorry. As we start to talk about percentages, I felt like two percent of the workforce turning over every year, especially in Ithaca, is probably something that we wouldn't even spend any resources on. We're gonna have turnover at two percent. Two percent of six hundred and fifteen take another twelve off from that number. So, we're really talking about twenty three to twenty five teachers a year that if we can identify early to figure out how can we, how can we whittle that number down that are leaving us? Again, that just shows the, the numbers are not out of proportion to something we can't. Alright. I wanted to have a sandwich on this slide and I couldn't find a slice of cheese that I like. So, I did, you know, I did the Jagger version. How do we, again, the question is how to preserve twenty to twenty five teachers a year? Obviously, tonight we're gonna talk about exit interviews and surveys. If we're talking about exit interviews, we're too late. We're walking out the door now.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, they're gonna like. This can inform what we do, stop the flow for the following years, and so that's, I think, important. But I think ultimately, if we can get to a place, and I believe Cornell does some of this stuff and Doc and I chatted about connecting with them and figuring some things out for them. Climate surveys that are targeted, that are carefully created to remove, you know, tremendous bias that you can have just by hitting someone cold with like, hey, how are you feeling about things today? And then understanding that it really does capture a moment in time. But they could be, they could be helpful in identifying these twenty to twenty five people before they actually submit their letter of resignation and give us an opportunity to hopefully save some of them. ITA is currently doing interviews with folks who have left, is my understanding, and they'll present that to us in a meeting or two. That could, you know, I don't wanna presuppose what they're finding, but that could be very informative. Especially as we head into negotiations in a couple years from now. I think it's, there's always time. I know, I know we're recording, hopefully some folks will see this. We do not impose salary or benefits on teachers or any of our bargaining rooms. There is a significant balance of power as we enter into negotiations with folks. Our unions are all represented by lawyers, attorneys. Albany, you have labor relations specialists, I have a lawyer being ten who helped with negotiations. So, it's really, you know, I think the past negotiations, especially since Dr. Roddick has been here, have been very collaborative. We've entered into unprecedented six-year contracts with a number of our unions, which until we did it, Doc, I don't, I don't know of any unionized public sector group that had a six-year contract. Anyway, and so that sort of is indicative of, I think, some progress that has been made with our unions and negotiations. But we'll see, you know, we'll see what ITA presents in terms of what their interview shows and and figure that out.
I think, you know, speaking to that and, and well, what I keep saying, especially twenty twenty two into twenty twenty three, language is important, intent is important. So, outside of a climate survey, one thing that I work with is check-ins. So, you know, we do a ninety-day check-in for a new hire. And then there's check-ins with, with the intent of, you know, course correction, understanding where that employee is. Now, we're talking about teachers. And it catches it, like you said, before it's to, before it's the exit interview. And then it's also solution-based, okay? You know, and that person feels heard, they understand that that someone's reaching out to them and they're not on an island or this is going on without awareness and there, there's an opportunity there. You know, I you know, I'm always concerned that some of the interview data that's collected and the way it's presented is, is more damning than solution-based. And, you know, okay, so now we're all, we're all there, so what are we gonna do with this? My goal is to like catch this and say, okay, let's work together, like you said, and how can we be more collaborative? Because from what I hope and understand is, the goal is to retain folks and they wanna stay here, not only wanna stay here, recruit, make other people wanna come here. So, how do we fuse this with that intent in mind?
Yeah.
So, what's the solution behind it? Alright.
And I don't know that we've been thinking about it exactly in this way. But what we've done with the review of untenured teachers is a way to get at that. Particularly if the principal or whoever is, is preparing the remarks for the review involves the teacher in the process and they have a conversation about, you know, what's working for you, what support are you getting, what support do you need, that kind of thing. And so, you know, as we think about moving forward, we could, you know, really stress that with our principals that we want them to, you know, use that as an opportunity to have, I mean, ostensibly, it's happening during the observation and evaluation process. But to, you know, to stress that we really want that to be happening.
One thing we, I can't remember where it was brought up, but it was almost outside of the building leader, but almost creating that touch person, especially for newer teachers, that offers that type of support, that can give the unbiased feedback of where they're really at, so they don't feel like they're being judged or, you know, because we're all, our own worst critics. So, if you were with your immediate supervisor, don't feel comfortable in your role and we're still learning, you may not be willing to show those flaws. So, if you have someone and it's more constructive and, and opportunity-based, I think that's where we have some barrier.
And that, where, you know, some teachers are assigned mentors.
Mm-hmm.
But if they're experienced teachers, are they, are they getting a mentor? And I even think about some teachers who might, you know, who transfer to a new building where, you know, things are different and they need a different kind of support in their new building or a new role than they did in the old one, and are we making sure that they're getting that?
We started implementing mid-year check-ins, no matter how long you've been in.
Mm-hmm.
I could have to say someone thanked me for honesty, which was rare on this. But I heard that and it, and it, I think it's gonna be a point for us as a governance team and for every educator in our organization at some point to start to be absolutely upfront and honest about this calling that we're asking folks to sign on to. To be here at this time is hard and it's gonna get harder. And the folks who were with us are gonna have to say, I am here because I want to do this work. Let me be absolutely clear, we will not be able to pay folks what they're worth as an educator. I've been a teacher for, I've been doing this work twenty eight years and, and my mama did it for forty six and she complained about her salary every single day. Let me be clear. So, we are not gonna be able to, while we have a six-year contract with the most significant increase to teacher salaries in probably in history of our school district over six years, that still hasn't been enough and we wish we could do more. So, let's be clear, let's, as we, have folks come to us with data and narratives, let's affirm and validate. You're right.
Yeah.
And not only we're not paying you enough now, we won't be able to pay you enough in the future. Let's also say that this work is extremely hard because we're attempting to educate everyone. Now, I, I, folks say that, give lip service to that, but I think in this school district with this force of support and this community is expecting us to educate everyone. Now, that is hard because that's gonna require us to be extorted in our practices when it comes to discipline. We have a code of conduct which is unique and one of a kind in the nation. Why? Because we're saying we wanna educate everybody. And to do that, we can't exclude in, only in rare circumstances. So, that's hard. There're gonna be folks who are gonna be leaving here, who are gonna show up in that data, who don't want that. There're gonna be folks who are gonna leave, who are gonna show up in this data and they're gonna be the first ones to answer the call from the folks conducting the survey to say, look, I don't wanna be a part of a micro-predentling program where I gotta, I'm asked to do three years' worth of coursework to check my biases and to see how I show up and what I engineer for kids. That's hard work. That engineers defensiveness, that engineers guilt, that is a lot. So, to say that you're gonna have to go through this process in the first three years of your employment, it's gonna have some folks show up in that data as leaving. And then, we're right in anti-modulation curriculum units. We are validating and affirming the humanity of all of our young people. And we all know, and I know my email inbox, right? Now, there are folks who don't want us to do that. They don't want us to have preferred pronouns and names in our student information system. They don't want us to have books in our libraries that see the humanity of young people who choose to be non-datary. We have folks who are leaving because of that. So, all this stuff, we gotta be absolutely clear right now. This is what we doing and it's the hardest work in the country. And why is it hard? Because it's never been done before, alright? And some people are gonna choose to come here, we get emails and resumes and people applying every day who want to come here and we have folks every day who will be leaving. So, I'm gonna hear, we're gonna hear a lot about this narrative in the coming weeks about people wanting to be here and not wanting to be here and all these reasons why. Some people not gonna be here because I'm here, they're not gonna like your principal because I am gonna be consistent about what we're expecting from folks who are gonna work here. And I'm at the point in my career where I know that's not gonna be comfortable for a lot of people and they're gonna choose to leave. I don't, maybe y'all didn't wanna get all that right now, but I think it's gonna be a point for us. I don't, maybe y'all didn't wanna get all that right now, but I think it's gonna be important for us to say that because that's honest and then that will set some expectation for what we're attempting to do and who we want to be here.
And it may not be shared in the data.
Speaking of things that aren't in the data, with any time you aggregate data, you lose things. And what I can't see here, what's impossible to see here, is something that answers a lot of the mail we're getting, which is school by school. Is there a need?
All building by building breakdown.
Yeah, is there a need, the trend of people leaving at data, I I have no idea, I suspect you do, but I don't know.
I I do have that data, I did break it down for the purpose of of this uh presentation tonight. But I think it's something we can definitely look at. Um it's broken down by school, it's broken down, it's still being compiled a little bit, it takes some time. It's broken down by years of service. Um we're also gonna add, this has not even started yet, but I think it's important because there's some data suggests, and it's been repeated in some other studies, that teachers ultimately, a lot of teachers, a significant percentage of teachers end up within an hour of what they either grew up or graduated from. And we just, we're seeing, I'm seeing that trend anecdotally over thirteen years I've been here. It's, you know, folks are like, we lost one of our most promising administrators because her um boyfriend at the time, husband now, lived downstate, had a business and she's like, I love Vidicar, I love this district, I love Dr. Brown, love working here, but I'm going home. And there's not any amount of money. We 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 were talking about trying to get his business moved up here. And it's like, thank you for the try, but no, um and I and I suspect there's, you know, a lot of repetition, it's like, going home. Um and that's what, uh, you know, the data, the data is important, ultimately people vote with their feet and why they're actually exiting could be, I'm in love and my spouse is in Delaware, I'm going back to Delaware, or I've always lived in Cortland, I took this job, I love Vidicar, I love working here, but uh we now have two young kids and they're in the Cortland system and we're not, I'm heading, I'm moving back to Cortland. Uh there's a, there's, I think, a number of those, and remember, I mean, I was really, I wasn't surprised, but I was pleased when the number came down to five point six percent of turnover. I mean, that is, that that that, you know, I don't know for sure, that's gotta be within a range of reasonableness in a range of other districts our size around around the state, especially with what I agree with. There's a lot of folks here from Cornell in particular to the big college who, I'm gonna come out based on what they're doing here. So I
And also, um, the data we're looking at includes two years of COVID. Um and um.
Yeah, my my recollection when I first got here and the number six in my head, it is like, okay, I'm somewhere new, these are new numbers. I think the summer I got here, which was uh a year before Dr. Brown, we were hiring around seventy teachers for that year, so and then and then the following years were in the sixties. Um as we expand, the data point backwards to capture three, maybe four or five more years, that trend will become more apparent, but these numbers did not at all shock us. Um and I hope you were there too. The data points, um again, we're looking through a a site called C through New York. Every public employee in New York State, regardless of who or what you do, is listed in C through New York. And so when folks have left us, beginning to compile data, where did they go? And that's some of the, some of the anecdotes I just gave you. Someone moved back to Cortland. I looked in, went guess, lo and behold, she lived in Cortland for three years, she was with us, right? And so you can begin to start to piece things together. Uh this person actually took, I I I I'm just gonna get a few broad numbers because I don't remember exactly, but she took like a nineteen hundred dollar reduction in her salary to go back there. Um but when you talk about gas prices, winter, tearing your car, an hours away from your family, just being
And winters.
And winters, yeah.
Uh you know, that's an actual plus. Um another case, I'm gonna switch the territory so as not to possibly identify this person. Um lived in Horseteds, moved back to Horseteds. But in C through New York, a year later, went to a private school in
So no, then that's
We're out, right? Well, half an hour away, had ten thousand dollar reduction, so you know, she went to Horseteds and got a five thousand dollar raise, um and it was where she lived, but it didn't last, so there's like, data is one thing and we need to really drill down. All right, so let's see if the battery works. All right, I know we're here tonight to talk about our exit interview process. You all have, because I I I didn't wanna do too many slides. Uh but it's on the screen, folks at home can probably look at it, see it better on their screens, but it's in front of you for for you. Like take just a moment, uh there are certain things that probably jumped right out at you. Um let's take maybe thirty more seconds and then get your thoughts on it. So no grammar.
Okay.
We'd probably see, I mean, the first thing that jumped out at me and I almost feel a little embarrassed saying it, it's on, it's it's paper.
Right.
Oh.
It's not online, it's not in any way interactive. Um and that's the the very first thing, can you just make this online accessible from home? Where people can relax and do it on their own time. And the interactive nature of it would allow, so for an instance, if someone says, uh, you know, if the question is, do you do you think your salary was good, fair, poor, awful? If they say fair, then, you know, the next screen could be, how much more would have made it good? Now, if they if they do the sliding scale, another twenty eight thousand dollars, you know that probably this is someone that we're not gonna be able to please. If they say another eight hundred or a thousand, then it's like, hmm. A, can we reach out to the person? Can we reach out to the unions? Can we, is there some way that we can, that we can save them from leaving? Um the other thing we need to talk about is whether we want our future surveys, the exit interviews to be anonymous. Um there are pros and cons obviously to this, but first of all, my thought is, like this is a professional organization, um there are no gotchas, there shouldn't be any gotchas here.
Mm-hmm.
If someone really is fearful that because they say their salary was bad and the health care is terrible and and my principal treated me poorly, that we're gonna reach out to some district that they're going to. Um, you know, stranger things have happened, I'm sure, but at some point, um we have to, uh I, in my opinion, this should be anonymous, because there are other things that could happen if they say, look, I really wasn't pleased with professional development, okay, let's talk about what you need, right? That's something we don't necessarily even need to negotiate anew with the union. It's like, what what worried you about professional development? For my salary, I just, you know, I'm getting two thousand dollars more moving down the street closer. Any way, you know, is there, we've got coaching uh openings, we've got extra classes, right? Um we don't get that if it's anonymous. So that's something, now this one, interestingly, on the final page allows you to sign up with your name if you want to, so I guess, you know, questions seem to be written as though it was anonymous, but you can sign the final page.
And while it's more than can, it looks like the expectation is that you will.
Yeah.
And that's gonna go in your personnel file.
Right, which is, I mean, I think just looking at this, I think on the question of anonymous, I think that the the um part about your supervisor, if you had a lot of, you know, things critical to say that's critical of your supervisor, um you might not want just, you know, pretend, like if your supervisor is somebody that you liked, but like not as a supervisor, um that you might feel uh a little bit reluctant to
Yeah.
uh to criticize that person um and to be associated with that.
Your supervisors are highly impactful on your job satisfaction.
Oh, absolutely.
So so how do we
I I'm saying that I I might, if I were in that situation, I'd probably prefer to be anonymous.
Mm-hmm, I got you.
I understand. But the other thing that jumps out on this thing is, it's it's a, it's a grading system for massive amounts of of data points, everything from job postings to the transfer procedure, of which you might not
Might not apply to
Right, right.
Uh health insurance, which is huge, I mean, you know, asking one or two questions about health insurance to capture a twenty plus million dollar part of our part of organization. Uh process to resolve a harassment complaints, supervised capabilities. If our exit interview is gonna serve us well to stem the tide of twenty to twenty five teachers leaving here, I think we should narrow it down to try to, or try to find key data points that can help us, you know, help us narrow that number down, um.
And
Get better survey.
Yeah, definitely.
Get a better exit interview.
Yeah, yeah, definitely need a better.
And I would say that um another reason to narrow it down is that I think a lot of people would be like, oh, this is too much, like if I'm supposed to, you know, sit down and answer all these things,
Yes.
I I gotta pack up my room. I don't have time for this, um.
I agree. Well, you know, then there's some key questions we have to decide on, and can it be anonymous? I mean, what circumstances can it be anonymous? Can, if it's online, some of the questions can be anonymous.
Right.
Like if we decide that it's important to understand the dynamic between them, there's the person leaving and their supervisor, that portion, whether or not they believe it's anonymous or not, I don't know.
Right.
That portion could be, you know, digitally pulled out and secured as confidential. The other thing to remember is that not all of our folks leave in June and July and August.
Right.
Um there is a, it's a minority percentage, but it's not insignificant to leave in October, January, February, um the data suggests. So if you're leaving in those months, it's a lot easier to know who you are, even if you do it or not.
Right.
Just by the time, by the time you're doing it. Um already talked about the salary and, you know, the questions online could ask follow ups if if desired. Um some questions that I think should be asked, especially are like, when were you hired? And was I C S D your first choice? There clearly are folks that are here for sometimes a year and a day. And, you know, they could, they could have other issues, but when you look at where they're from, where they went to school, et cetera, they got a job here, they took it because they needed employment, and then within that year, they've worked their way to where they really wanna be. Now, we can compete with folks, we try to figure out how do we compete uh for 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 them. But I think we need to identify them first. Um if you've been here a year and your answer is how long have you been considering leaving I C S D a year, then right, you know, that tells us something. Uh again, where do you define hometown, where'd you graduate from college? We started to talk about those and the importance of knowing that. So I think maybe just discussion on how we move forward. Um we're clearly gonna do an online version of this. Um I think it needs to be narrowed down in terms of the data points we're trying to get people to answer in five to six minutes. Anything more than that, the generation X is, whatever generation we're in. Yeah, certainly it takes more than five minutes, I I don't know if
You know, for ten. Um, you know, I I'm thinking that, I don't know, I mean, I I'd much prefer doing, you know, narratives rather than than strongly agree or, um so I kinda like the questions on the last page and that uh maybe, I, you know, I'm thinking off the top of my head, but then, you know, eliminate four, five and six, um where you rate all these many, many things.
Yeah, I think that could be it.
Now, of course, it's not as quantifiable, yeah.
What if you reworded to, you know, um that rate, were there any, would you like to make any comments regarding, you know, four, five and six?
That's that's, oh, yeah, that might be another thing.
All of the things.
Instead of asking them to, you know, do all these ratings, just say
They could offer both online.
Yeah.
Clearly, there are some people that like to do the click in the slide and let you see, right?
Right.
But there can always be an option to do either or or both.
Yeah.
And things like rate your salary, if you click anything other than good, the next question that pops up is, would you, you know, what would you need it to be to be considered good? And then also, is there any additional comments about your salary? I don't know. But each other question is gonna offer that and people can either go through at their fast pace or slow pace, whatever pace they want, but at least we're getting some data, even if they go through it quickly.
So you rate and then please elaborate or be specific.
Yep.
Yeah, I think I would, I just, I'm not sure that I would have, you know, so many of these things. And if, you know, if we go with four, five and six, a version of four, five and six, I would scale that back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be written differently, are any of the following, do, did any of the following factor into your decision to leave?
Right.
So there's no need to grade the health insurance.
Right, yeah, right.
Have you never used, in twenty five years, only never used the health, you haven't been to a doctor in three years?
And still on my parents, right?
Right, uh right, are you still, yeah, still on your parents. Um but if they do grade it, then it opens up to more elaboration, either actual or like
I think, I think that's good, because that's, that gets to that other issue that people like to do on surveys, which is, how important is this to you?
Yeah.
Then rate it.
Yeah.
So if you're saying, if this is important, or if this is a factor and you're leaving.
Yeah, if this is, I like, were any of these a factor when you're leaving, I'd like that.
Because to have your salary and um the sick leave bank in the same, it is sort of silly.
Right.
You know, I mean, salary is extremely important to most people in sick bank, because it's relatively, you know, in in uninteresting
And I would say, you know, sick, yeah, I mean, we can get rid of some of these things, um. Yeah, definitely.
All right. Well, why don't we uh, Livia and I uh sort of prep what we would like to see.
Yeah.
Recognize you all possibly. Uh where you had contact with I T A, are they presenting next time or?
Uh probably next time, probably, though it's not um, it's not set in stone and in fact, um so the next time, which would be uh the first week in December, would be December sixth and sixth, and I will be out of town December sixth. Um, so, I mean, we can go ahead with the meeting, but I don't think we could, should go ahead with the I T A if I'm not gonna be there.
Yeah.
Right.
They're putting in a lot of, uh, a lot of effort, a lot of work into this, so I'm sort of suggesting it may be a full complement of the the problem.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I think they are, so maybe make it, or January, meet it. And maybe in, I don't know, uh, with, or maybe you what, if you think you could come back in December or, uh, with, uh, a a draft of a new survey, and that could be, um, what the committee looks like, and then maybe we could share with I T A at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping to hear their data first and sort of incorporate, but, you know, it is what it is.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, we can put back, we can draft.
Yeah. And we could maybe even say, this is a draft.
Yeah.
Now, we're gonna redraft it, perhaps, you know, incorporating, uh, what we hear from you.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
Cool. That's seven minutes.
Four.
Let's start the next chapter, everyone ready?
Um, anything else for, uh, we got a, for as good of the order as, uh, uh, I would say, uh.
When, when might we see the data broken down by school, um?
Uh, I would definitely say, and you probably want it quicker, but I would definitely say by the next meeting. It's something that we could share, you know, it's sort of like an objective session, because of name, or it could just take the names off, block out the names, so show you, you know.
But I.
But I think.
But I think it may be a little bit are there, could it lead to people being identified in a way that we shouldn't do, if it's not an exact section?
Right, I don't, I don't know the answer that, I I do think we're obligated to look at it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, oh, yeah.
In respects to concerns, right?
I mean, I'm scrolling through what I have right now. It's, it's not, it's, uh, not quite finished, it's not, it's not statistically more for the like, a little bit more for school.
Uh-huh.
But not, I mean, in three years, it was about twenty-four, like, having retired guys and quickly.
Uh-huh.
So that's not, uh, over three years.
Also, why don't we
Yeah.
Say, we'll look at it
Absolutely.
next time.
Alright. We'll look away at this.
And I, I think you do need to to continue to show us the the factoring in of the retirees, even if you then pull it out.
I agree.
Right, because it, there is an upswell, as as the population ages, as our population ages.
Yeah.
Um, and that could be contributing to a perception of a mass exodus that may be extreme compared to what the
Right.
Yeah.
what the numbers would show if you take that out.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And COVID is so tricky, but honestly,
Yeah.
anybody in New York, in my opinion, anybody in their right mind could have returned during COVID.
Would, yeah.
Would, right?
Yeah, I know, I mean, uh, yeah.
You know.
Exactly.
I mean, particularly if, I mean, you've been doing this for a long time, you've been doing this for thirty years and, uh,
Yeah. Absolutely.
and you gotta teach remotely. I would have been out of there, I would have been out of there.
That would have been a lot.
Any of those factors, remotely, in-person, hybrid, whatever.
Yeah. Right, yeah, right. I was, yeah. And I say, you know, I'm saying this to, uh, to somebody the other day. You know, the thing is, that people who have very high standards for themselves as educators, you know, they are less likely to be able to accept, I can't, you know, because of the, you know, the the restrictions and the constraints that were imposed by COVID, I'm not gonna be able to do the job that I wanna do. You know, people with high standards for themselves have a lot of trouble accepting that.
Yeah.
Um, and so if they've got an out, like retirement, with a very nice pension, it's like, yeah.
Well, we'll start to look at the other other areas too, there was, uh, in that three-year time period, we got the same cavity answers, including teachers, uh, four hundred and sixty-six eliminations. Probably a hundred and fifty-seven a year. Alright. Cool, thank you. Thank you.
I did, I went to a newsbook conference this weekend. And I did a, attended a session on collected bargaining, um, and, uh, so when we get there, I'm gonna share with some of what I gleaned from that.
Alright, alright.
Sounds good, alright. So we're calling this meeting, or?
We are calling this meeting, oh, oh.
Not quite, let's have a quick question there.
Not quite.
Uh, yeah, we can ask, right?
Yeah, that's all, just where are we on it?
Okay, sure, uh, you know, anything that you're able to share with us right now about, uh, retiree health insurance and the process for exploring options?
Yes, we'd love to, um, we are working through, uh, recommendations to bring to the board, we have planned to do that at the second meeting in November. One, we've, uh, engaged with folks about a survey, uh, capable of insight, but I probably engaged with them to conduct a survey of all folks, when I help care offerings, that's one. Uh, this is one blank on the second one. Survey was one.
Oh, and the audit, the.
The audit, yeah, you wanna talk about the audit, what we're, what we're thinking about engaging with the company audit.
Uh, yeah, we'll name the company, but there is a company that has resources dedicated to health insurance and public sector, and
Yeah.
Uh, if we, and I think we did get the board's, um, directive, direction on this. One, to check, see if the savings calculations, for lack of a better term, the reduction in the amount of money that we spend is not really savings, was accurate, that's, you know, roughly two million here, and then second, secondarily, whether the number and rate of declinations, um, is consistent, or if it's some sort of aberration that we should be concerned about in terms of, you know, comparable plans and prior plans on, uh, our.
My third piece, we are still looking for options that may, uh, meet the needs of a smaller group of folks that are here. So that's not, we expose some things to our attorneys and our consultants as well, so we have a third option to make the board.
So, second week and, or second meeting?
That's the plan, if not sooner, but, uh, the second week.
Okay. Okay, take care.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now we're done.
Now we're done.